This lovely day will dwindle into evening. We'll sigh goodbye to the Nick we had. Not alone, but rather all together. We'll remember Nick Fish and be glad. We will be content when we recall his commitment to make our city a better place to live. The warmth of his smile that lingers in our memories, the laughter, the stories that we all have, have. His impact leaves us with a lasting presence because he showed how very much he cared. We won't forget all the time we shared. I'll remember Nick Fish, Jazz Commissioner Fish. We will remember Nick Fish and we'll smile.
Salaam alaikum, peace be upon you. Good afternoon, everybody. Dear Patricia, dear Maria, and dear Chapin, and respected friends. In our tradition as a Muslim, God Almighty always remind us that Inna lillah wa inna ilaihi larajoon. To God we belong and to God we shall return. Death is the ultimate reality that each one of us sometimes never think and reflect about it, that one day we're going to meet our Creator. The Portland Muslim community and the Arab-American community here in Portland and in Oregon would like to extend the deepest condolences to you, Patricia, and your family. We have lost, as an immigrant community, a great man, a great leader, and a gentle giant. Nick Fish was a healer and he was a unifier. His doors were always open to people. He was a sincere and beautiful soul. He will always respond to any event and he will always be there. I met our dear beloved brother, Commissioner Fish, in an invitation that our dear, one of our great founder and visionary Arab-American, Nuhad Tulan, the dean of the College of Urban Planning. At that event, Nuhad told me, "Wajdi, we are going to have lunch and be ready for it." I was 32 years old. In that event, there were through two great Republicans. Governor Attiya, a proud Arab-American, and Senator Hatfield. And there were two great Democrats, Nuhad Tulan and Commissioner Fish. And here I am, as a young man, as a junior independent. Just said, "As an independent," I'll always be independent because I want to heal and unify our public square. I don't want to lean to the left and I don't want to lean to the right. I have known our beloved brother as a kind soul eight years before his election. He never looked at the color of his skin. He never looked at his ethnic background. He never looked at a poor or a rich individual except with love, that unconditional love. My dear Patricia and Maria and Chapin, let us share with you the sorrow. Let us share with you this loss, this great loss of a great human being with a great integrity and compassion, a healer and unifier. He went out of his way to empower the immigrant positively and integrate this immigrant into his office. When you look at the young ladies and the young men in his office, they're people of many colors. I hate to be labeled in a color of our skins, but we are all the color of God. My beloved Patricia and beloved Maria and private chapman. Your father, your husband, Patricia was a visionary and he's indeed that unconditional love of God. He was a champion in so many ways. Today, we lack this championship in our elected officials. Some of them are very bold and great leaders and some of them shy from the immigrant and in particular, the Muslim and Arab community. He was an outstanding example of an honorable, honest man. He felt proud of his heritage of his father and great-grandfather. He meant what he said and he practiced what he preached. When the tragedy of the Trimate in May 26, 2017, the Muslim community launched a fund for the Portland heroes. He was an advisor for us. He said to us, "Wajdi, this is a challenge for us. How are we gonna do raise 60,000 in one week?" And believe it or not, we raised 630,000. And he defined for us... [applause] And I told him, "Commissioner Fish, would you be in the advisory board?" He said, "I'll be honored if you do this." And I told him, "We have rabbis and imams and ministers and priests and Catholic nuns in this advisory council." We shared the tragedy of these great heroes that gave their life and we shared of the young hero that's still living. My permanent feeling is not a sense of loss, but a sense of suspension. A sense of suspension, some people's memory never dies because their moral and political imagination are organically rooted, rooted in the living memory they leave behind them. It is very hard to imagine our city whole with this gentle giant, Commissioner Fish. He was a dignified elected official and the pride of the city, of our city of Portland. Our beloved Commissioner Fish was a man of tremendous stature, respected lawyer and political leader, a bridge builder, a great advisor to so many and integrated so many of us to love this city beyond the colors of the skin. My dear sisters and brothers, it took a tragedy. Look at the beauty and look at each other. Please look at each other behind you on your left and right. It took a tragedy of the loss of our dear brother, Commissioner Fish, to bring us together. I'm very grateful for so many of our positive, great faith and civic leaders and elected officials for bringing our communities together in the past and in today. It is important to heal and reunite and let us go beyond the politics of politics. Let us go beyond of the color of skin. Let us heal and unify and be bold and courageous women and men. Let us love one another. My dear Patricia and Maria and Chapin, let us all pray. May God Almighty give patience and strength to you, Patricia and Maria and Chapin, for the loss of your great husband and great father. O Allah, our dear brother Nick Fish is under your care and protection. So protect him and rest him in peace. Forgive his shortcomings as a human being and have mercy upon him and his family. Surely, you are the most forgiving and the most merciful. Amin.
Good afternoon. I'm so, so very honored to speak at the Celebration of Life for Nick Fish. So where do I begin? I first met Nick probably sometime back in the mid 1990s when he first came back to Portland to join Patricia and Maria. That was before Chapin was born, so sorry, Chapin. Thank you, PSU, for bringing Professor Sektor to PSU and Nick, thus Nick to Portland. He dropped by my travel agency office one day unannounced to meet me about joining him in effort to start a award program to honor outstanding Portlanders called Urban Pioneer Award at Portland State University. So the relationship began then. I was told of some of his minor connections he had in New York City. He didn't elaborate much, but you know, internet is interesting. You can find anything and everything about a person's life. So Nick Fish is Hamilton Fish, his great-great-great-grandfather. Made four, five generations ago, served on the dinner staff for General George Washington when in the Revolutionary War. He had other Hamilton Fishes, were governors of Brooklyn, Secretary of State under President Grant. On his mother's side, if you can believe this, she was with the Stuyvesant family. That's what Nick Stuyvesant Fish, that's his middle name, Stuyvesant family. You know the Stuyvesant family that founded New York City? Back then it was called New Ham- Amsterdam. So how would a guy like Nick Fish come to Portland, Oregon? Of course, love his wife, Patricia. Thank you, Patricia. But he was not pretentious. He was a very humble man. He spotted being a real, true-blood blood there ever was one in Portland, Oregon. Fast forward three years, few years later, after the Atlantic Convention 9/11, I had gathered some leaders in Portland, Oregon to talk about taking a group of Portlanders to New York City in support of New York, New York City that was devastated by 9/11 bombing. My phone rings as I was meeting with a bunch of people in my office with Nick Fish. He said, "I read about your trip to New York and Oregonian. Can I join your effort?" So I said, "Come on, come on up and talk to us." I knew he had some connection to New York City. I didn't know what kind of connection he had. Of course, then I found out very shortly that his mother-in-law had worked for then George, Governor George Pataki as Executive Secretary. So Governor Pataki came to our farewell reception at Water of Astoria. Governor New York came to thank the Oregonians who were there in support of 9/11 victims. He also had connection to the Broadway Theater. One of his friends was in charge of all the Broadway Theaters. So we had the, these singers from Les Mis sing at our farewell dinner. Another singer from another Broadway hit. His one of his best friend was head of the Park Commission in New York City. So we had our, one of the vigils, silent vigil at the Union Square Park in New York City. Nick knew everyone in New York City. I had no idea. I didn't know anyone. I'd never been to New York City. So that's how our friendship began. And then in 2002, he decided to run for city council. Hard anyone knew who Nick Fish was. My, my daughter Kristen was the only staffer I can afford to hire in my office. Nick ran his office out of my office. He lost big. I think he was third or fourth in that first race. But wouldn't give up. Two, two years later, decided to run again. This time he was running against Sam Adams, who was the chief of staff for Mayor Kents. So he lost that time as well. He wouldn't give up. Two years later, decided to run third time. He won that seat and he was the longest-serving city commissioner currently until he passed away January 2nd. So that's how I got to know Nick Fish as a politician, as a community leader. And I would always remember him as someone that gave me an opportunity to work with him for the flight of friendship to New York City. So there's a quote from his last farewell comment to the citizen people of Portland. In last communication with Portland, he said these words. "It is our obligation to find the common ground in order to advance the common good. I've seen the power of partnership and trust our community leaders to see that. People of Portland deserve our best." He came to Portland and New Yorker but died as a Portlander and Oregonian. Thank you for many years of friendship. Nick, you always be my heart. I'll miss you. Portland is better for what you gave to the city. God bless and Godspeed and keep those angels in mind.
Patricia and Maria and Chapin, it's an incredible honor to have a few minutes to talk about Nick. As I prepared to come here to celebrate Nick's life with all of you, I found myself thinking about the first time I really got to know Nick. It also involved someone passing away, but it was a lonely death. It was the winter of 2008 and a homeless man had died from exposure in the Lone First Cemetery. Nick came to me. I was directing a homeless outreach organization at the time. And he not only knew the man's story, but he was clearly deeply saddened and angered by how the man had died. He wanted to talk about what he could do as a city commissioner to prevent something like this from ever happening again. By the following winter at Nick's direction, the city's housing bureau had created the first-ever coordinated emergency response to seek out and shelter homeless people during winter storms. From that point on, I understood the depth of Nick's commitment to being there for people who are pushed to the margins in our community and that he felt a great responsibility to stand up for them in his role as city commissioner. Over the years that I knew him, his words and actions repeatedly demonstrated this deep commitment and sense of responsibility. I saw it when not long after he became commissioner, we were headed to a meeting and he came upon a man lying on the sidewalk near city hall. Rather than just walking by, Nick interrupted himself and with urgency in his voice, asked what we could do for him, but also talked about how unacceptable it was that as a community, we continued to fail to care for those who are most vulnerable. I saw it every year when he would come to share a Thanksgiving meal with people who were living on the streets or had recently been housed. He came not to give a speech or even to volunteer. He came to get to know people, to know their stories, and to check in with the people that he built relationships with there over the years. That included a couple he first met when he delivered a holiday food box to them in their new apartment in southeast Portland almost 10 years ago. Nick attended that couple's wedding just a few months before he passed away. It was this genuine commitment to human connection and belief in the essential value of every person that led Nick to use the power of his office again and again to make sure the city was caring for those left for this behind. It's no exaggeration to say that Nick was critical to every major effort to meet the needs of people experiencing homelessness in our community over the past decade, whether homelessness was in his portfolio or not. He never faltered in his insistence that the housing we subsidize with public dollars be acceptable, be accessible to those at risk of sleeping on our streets and in our shelters. He fought every year to protect and expand city services for people experiencing homelessness. And in the last few years, his unwavering insistence that ending homelessness requires housing helped propel us to two affordable housing bonds and a commitment to add thousands of units of housing with services for severely disabled people. What all of us here know about Nick is that he didn't do any of these things because he saw a political advantage in them. He did them for the man who died in the Lone First Cemetery in 2008 and for the thousands of people like him who will be homeless in our community tonight. That's who Nick was and why everyone who was working in pursuit of housing justice in our community will always be grateful to him and will always remember him. I miss you, Nick.
Good afternoon. Little did I know when I met Nick Fish that he would become one of the most influential contributors in our community. We met when both of us were transitioning off of a board of directors and he invited me to breakfast. He said he wanted to get to know who I was. We had breakfast and what impressed me about this man from New York was that he had so much enthusiasm for the city of Portland. He actually had a grasp on the city of Portland, who we are. He talked about the fact that we're not a diverse city and he wondered why. He wanted to know why we called ourselves liberal and progressive when there were a lot of challenges to that image. I was stunned that this man from New York had such a good sense of who we were here in Portland, Oregon. So I said, "What brought you here?" He says, "Oh, my wife." As if that was clearly to be understood. But what I went on, what I went on to learn about Nick is that he had this true commitment to social justice. Shortly after we met, two or three years later, he joined the Board of Directors of Volunteers of America, Oregon. And what I was so impressed with, we're a broad-based human service organization. We provide services to children and families. Of course, you can support those programs, right? We provide services to the frail elderly and it's easy to support those programs as well. What excited Nick Fish about being on the Board of Directors of Volunteers of America was our commitment to criminal justice reform, our commitment to providing services to the most vulnerable in our state, those individuals whose lives have fallen off track. They've made poor choices, they've been incarcerated, and now are re-entering the community. He was a supporter of that population. He was a supporter of our drug treatment program for the drug court. He celebrated at city hall and other places the success stories of those individuals which transformed their lives and got their lives back on track. I was so impressed with that because that wasn't necessarily what you had to do. He did it because it came from his heart. But of all the things that Nick Fish did in the time that I knew him as a friend, as a commissioner, as a board member for Volunteers of America, Oregon, I would be remiss if I did not say how I will most remember him. And that's through the love story between Nick Fish and Patricia Sektor. You could not meet with the commissioner or Nick without him talking about his wife, her success story, her contributions, her excellent parenthood, her motherhood, her true commitment to also social justice. Nick Fish, I will remember you forever. And I want to say thank you for your contributions to our city. Thank you for your contributions to Volunteers of America, Oregon. But most of all, being a proud example of your contributions to your family. Thank you so much.
We stood up for all the elected officials. One, we need a little bit of a break. But two, I think the most important job many of us have and as community members is parenting. So please, and Nick Fish was an excellent father. Please stand if you have either parented or helped someone parent a child or been parented yourself. And just stretch. Thank you. You can sit. It was just a break. So my name is Peyton Chapman and I am the principal of Lincoln High School, but I'm really a friend of Nick and Patricia and Chapin and Maria's. And I first met Nick and Patricia because we were parenting daughters. 10 years later, we were parenting sons. And I don't know that there are that many people courageous enough to parent children 10 years apart. We were young parents first and then we're older parents. Nick really loved young people. I first understood this when my son went to spend the night at Chapin's house and he came home the next day and he talked about the food. All first grader boys talk about the food. And about the cool older sister and of course, his friend Chapin. But he also came home talking about his friend Nick. And Nick engaged young people in really authentic ways at his own level. And I saw him do this repeatedly, asking students and really looking at them and listening to learn what their interests were and what they were involved with and what they thought was important. And then Nick would share his own and they would listen. I saw him do this repeatedly and remember a family barbecue at our house where our fifth grade neighbor, Niku Farhad, came over and she shared very excitedly that she'd memorized all of the Hamilton songs from Broadway and she sang a few. Nick really loved music and young people and history. So he was very excited too. And he shared his family's connection to Alexander Hamilton in a fun and informative, never pretentious way that kept the conversation going. And Niku was just so thrilled that they had shared that and he'd, she actually met someone that was related to the songs that she was singing in our backyard. There was one other time I really talked to Nick before that and Patricia was busy. She was teaching and he called and said, "Patty's, Patty's off and I have missed..." This was my responsibility and I've missed the kindergarten registration date. It's like, "It's okay, we got you. I know how to do this." So that Chapin was enrolled in kindergarten. It was good. Nick was an incredible supporter of children through his unwavering support of our public schools too. It wasn't ever just about his own children in public schools. It was about all children, all schools. He loved coming to soccer games. He loved coming to Maria's games and Chapin's Creeper Recreation Games and talking to the coach. It was really very competitive for eight-year-olds. And the Creepers are still playing and then coming to Chapin's high school games. He encouraged the teams to keep playing and always pointed out their talent and their leadership skills, explained to me what a triple threat was. They could pass, shoot, score, and they were really great soccer players. They were scholars and they were really nice human beings. He followed the girls on to college to watch their games. And as Parks and Rec Commissioner, he worked to increase field spaces for kids across our whole city. It didn't matter if his kids had access to field spaces. All the children in the city need access to field spaces. And he fought equally hard for K-5 arts education. I remember him competing to get Chapin's Bridge Project painting at an event. But he knew that it wasn't okay if other children weren't able to do Bridge Project, art projects as well. Any student in our PPS system that has had access to art in the last decade really needs to be grateful to Nick Fish. He showed up for every bond campaign and was a regular keynote speaker at the We the People Constitution, the regionals. I remember a few years ago, it was a little controversial around marijuana decriminalization and legalization and he hooked all the 16 and 17-year-olds in the room asking about their opinion on that. And I thought, "Oh my God, he's not gonna do this." But he really shifted it quickly to federalism versus state rights and how government really could and should be working for its people. Nick cared deeply about all of our children and their futures. He never once said, "It's not the city's job to run schools." He always said, "Our city is only as good as our schools." Many of us here today also follow Nick Fish on social media and look forward to reading his weekly updates. I reread his post for Valentine's Day from two years ago, this weekend. He shared that he wanted to promote love and gratitude, especially now, 2018 is still true, and help bring everyone together. He posted that he was grateful for three things. His loving and supportive family, Maria, Chapin, and Patricia. They always came first. He was grateful for his progressive city of Portland. And finally, he was grateful the work that he was privileged to be able to do in service to others. He implored everyone to come together with love and gratitude for each other. I know he will want us to keep doing that. Nick loved his family always. He loved our city with added care for all of our children and he was deeply grateful. He was the government that worked for its people and he knew the gift of family and friends. Thank you, Nick.
Wow. Hello. I'm Nick's younger brother, his Irish twin, as they say. I'm Nick's younger brother, his Irish twin, as they say. For three weeks a year, we'd be the same age. I've been looking forward to this opportunity to address you, Nick's friends. So much has transpired in the last few months with Nick's passing so suddenly. This is a chance for me to look back with you at a life so consequential to us all. Reconnecting with Nick's world is an honor for me. I'm privileged to engage the love I am encountering coast to coast. So many felt unprepared when the news came. I hope I, too, can help ease the unease we all feel. I'm joined today by my wife, Sue, as well as our eldest brother, Ham. Each of us had the opportunity to be with Nick in his final days, as did our sister, Alexa. Patty, Maria, and Chapin welcomed us into their home for what was to be our final goodbyes. Patty was the rock that she has always been, around whom all activity emanated. Her strength, as always, was remarkable. I've dabbled in elective office, so I know how Patty, like my wife, was the true rudder of the operation. Thank you, Patty, for all your kindness for so long. We're also joined by our stepbrother, John. John attained the level of master in chess at a young age. Nick and I used to play John on multiple boards simultaneously, except that John was And he'd still win every board. A shout-out is in order to hospice, some of whose staff I got to know during that brief week, who made a permanent impression on me with their wisdom and compassion and intuition. Really solid individuals. One nurse counseled us that, given how monumental Nick's announcement of his resignation from the council would be, and that was on New Year's Eve, that that announcement may well be a turning point for Nick. Wise counsel indeed. As we all know, Nick persevered for two and a half years with his diagnosis, doing what he loved to do most: enjoying his family and serving his constituents. He knew how precious that time was, and he exercised it all to all of our benefit. Many of Nick's mentors are here with us today. I'm sure everyone, I'm sure one of you, every one of you knows how special a role you played in the mosaic that comprised Nick's team. Our brother, Ham, of course, has set a high bar as mentor with his advocacy for human rights and social justice across many platforms. Our father, too, stands out as mentor with his own 26 years of public service. Our dad and Nick were similar in many, were similar in their natural affinity for public service. It came so easily. Nick and I cut our teeth on accompanying our dad on weekend clam bakes and radio call-in shows. Certainly, Nick's time as staff with the great Barney Frank was formative. Nick was driven. I always knew him to put in the time. It was hard to outwork Nick. He made self-improvement a high priority. Many have observed that Nick was a unifier, bringing people together, inclusive. He regularly brought me into his circles from college to Portland and everywhere in between. It was one of his many great qualities. I could tell you today about how Nick would steal from my plate because I was a slow eater, still am, or how we would go to a restaurant, and what was ordered was pretty much predetermined, or how he would toss out the window my sardine sandwich, which I would nurse on long, hot, family car trips. Or how he would drive in traffic and confronting all the transgressions of the roads with that wonderful Nick Fish indignation, that would be me sinking in the passenger seat in retreat. Reality check: my wife says I'm not immune for participating in the same behavior. Hey, I'm a male. What do you want from me? Nick was secure in the knowledge of who he was and what his gifts were, and from an early age was not shy to confront opposing forces. He learned at a young age the art of counting heads, usually my head, in his frequent parental lobbying efforts. My proxy got a lot of exercise, occasionally authorized. I think that self-knowledge went on to serve him well in law and government. Couple that with a natural affinity for the underdog and a keen moral compass, and you get a profile of a pretty potent force. Nick was one of the keepers of family memorabilia. He loved to mix it up with archivists, curators, booksellers. My visits to Portland often included a tour with Nick of the bookstore circuit and an art show, both opportunities to engage purveyors of the next potential addition to his collections. Conversations he relished. He also was somewhat obsessed with framing. This he definitely got from our father. Our dad had a keen sense to notice when a painting was hanging askew. Nick's more recent visits to our house were never complete without a tutorial on acid-free framing. I was often found to be a narriers in my preservation of history. My singular possession of a sliver of a branch from a tree dating back to whenever in the courtyard of St. Mark's Church in the Bowery in New York City was something Nick coveted intensely, fueling a debate, a decades-long negotiation to get me to surrender this little piece of wood, that frankly, I don't know where I got it, but his incessant interest in it exploded its value multi-fold. Nick and his father, our father, also shared a dexterity for fatherhood with his wonderful relationship with his beloved Maria and Chapin. See me afterwards for a smartphone tour of texted Chapin soccer and Maria marathon moments. Nick's singular deployment of humor was never more on display with his interaction with his kids. He would often just take a look or a word to soften everybody up. We all know about his gift to frame a scene that would nail its comic potential, and his self-deprecation was dazzling. When the stars lined up, he could get me laughing till it hurt. I've been vigilant in following all the amazing media and social media of the last months and want to thank all for the overwhelming outpouring. Many on the City Hall beat have had particularly gratifying insights into his impact. It really is healing. I've been intrigued to better understand Nick's occupation of the centrist lane on the council. I always thought of Nick as being to the left of me and that the center was my exclusive domain in the family. Does that put me to the right of center? Portland, you gave the canvas, Portland, you gave the canvas to do what he did best: engage, confer, coalesce, serve. Thank you, President Perry, for your gracious hosting of us today and to the committee that made it all happen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the commissioners for your deeply meaningful tributes, that first council meeting in January accompanied by that empty chair. The fulfillment you afforded Nick with his cherished tenure was a gift from you all. Thank you to the wonderful Sonia and the great team you led and lead. I have always harbored hopes that Nick would continue to seek office just so when the time was right, as a similarly self-avowed political junkie, I could get involved in more campaigns. I'm so glad to have been a part of two of his election night celebrations in Portland. Save for his wedding day and the birth of his children, I'm not sure, surrounded by loyal friends and loving family, if there could be a happier moment for him. Thank you.
Patty, I was wondering what you were going to put up there for me. First, I want to thank Patty for this opportunity to speak to you all. This is a bit of a juxtaposition of the incongruent, because Nick and I are old, old friends. We first met when we were 10 years old. This'll be hard to get through. Good afternoon, everyone. I've really appreciated. I also want to thank the speakers, because I've learned a lot this afternoon. I was well aware of Nick's human, self-effacing side. That's been a lifelong trait, but I wasn't actually aware he was quite so funny. And I could see a few. I'll tell a story or two about that. And I wasn't quite sure he was a New Yorker, because to me, he's a Washingtonian. That's where we grew up and spent many years. So it was great to hear about all that. My wife, Vicki, and I, the reason we're here is we came out for two months to spend some time and look forward to spending time with Nick and Patty. And unfortunately, we arrived on the day he died. But alas, I'm here to talk about young Nick. Let me start by debunking a few myths that have popped up in the discussion, particularly with his family, because I've had the opportunity to spend some time with them. Number one, he's not bad with everyday chores. And actually, you know, I would often come up with ideas, and he'd follow me. In the summer of 1977, I was down in South Carolina and said, "Hey, come on down and spend the summer, work with me." And he came down, and his job was to cut lawns on golf courses. So that was the summer we spent down there. The next summer, I was actually out in San Francisco, and I can say, he can actually wield a hammer. He and I were two carpenter assistants restoring Victorian homes in San Francisco. And I'll give him an A for carpentry. His family's quite surprised that he can do that. I think this is consistent, and I think one of the things I want to get across is stuff that occurred 50 to 60 years, 40 to 50 years ago is consistent with his personality now. He would like to get involved in whimsical travel experiences with me and kind of fun adventures. I'll pick some examples. One summer, I was over in Europe and asked him, "Hey, why don't you join me in the UK and Ireland?" And he traveled with me there. There were a few things that were special, his family history. His father had worked in Dublin, Ireland, and that was important to him. We went to the Edinburgh Festival when there were 400 acts instead of the 40,000 acts there are today. We managed to get ourselves to go see Muhammad Ali fight the heavyweight championship of the world once. We all thought that was a great, great accomplishment. He returned the favor by inviting me into one of those early Super Bowls. Those are things you remember. And then I think one thing that's relevant to coming to Portland, Oregon, is he went to school in Boston, University in Boston, and I went to school in Chicago. And one year, I persuaded him to come on out to Chicago. Now, those of you who live out here don't appreciate it, but any of us who grew up way back when, to get somebody from the East Coast who never went off the East Coast, off the East Coast was a major accomplishment. Getting him to Portland was that much of a greater accomplishment. So in some early, young Nick was a regular guy. But our formative years were from Washington, DC, and I think those years helped shape Nick. We went to a small school in the heart of the city. It was full of tradition. Yeah, we had long hair back then, but it was coat and tie, chapel every day. Our teachers were examples of Mr. Chips, and most of them were like that. Nick and I are a relationship, I would ride my, I was a bicyclist, so I'd ride my bike to meet him and see him around town. A couple of those experiences, it was the years of Vietnam War protests. You know that when you go down the street to school and the National Guard is occupying the environment around you, so you get a real feel of that. It was also the time of Watergate. While his father was personally involved on the Judiciary Committee of the House of Representatives, our friends and parents were the ones who were in positions of power and getting, you know, getting the boot, so to speak. I think these things gave us a sense of public, you know, public service and what it was all about. One funny thing, and I learned it when I saw Peter's email, was names were important to us, nicknames. He was Fish, I was Levitt. But our French teacher, Monsieur Bier, would refer to him as Poisson, you know, which... And one I like, because I think of it whenever I watch the NPR program Catch Me Later with Ophira Eisenberg, but he was an early proponent of a Starbucks name. If you said, "So what's your name?", he'd say, "Fish." "How do you spell that?", he'd say, "P-H-O-T-I", like Foti, because PH for photography, and he'd walk through that. So I guess that's an example of that early sense of humor. I wanted to close with two aphorisms that our headmaster from the school we went to shared with us. He was a fairly commanding person, but I think it reflects his life here in town. The first one is choosing the hard right over the easy wrong. Choosing the hard right over the easy wrong. From what I've heard of you guys today, I feel that he exemplified that. The second's a little quipier, which he would tell to us, "Our system exists not to get boys into the kingdom of Harvard, but to get them into the kingdom of heaven." And I think Nick did well, because he did both. My sense is, Nick, walk that talk. If we step forward 40 years, here we are. There's an enduring legacy from his work, and thanks to everyone for sharing that with me and my wife while we're here. Wonderful family and friends, enjoyed getting to know people, and we'll miss you, Nick. Thanks.[1612.63]
On behalf of Nick's family and friends, thank you all for coming. Your presence gives them a great deal of comfort. Nick's family asks that you please add your memories to the memory trees that are located around the room. One of the memory trees will be installed in City Hall so the public can continue to share their memories after today. We hope you'll stay a while and talk and share more ideas and memories of Nick. Thank you for coming.